The bewitching hour is here. Seven o'clock, May 21st, I'll call the regular meeting of the Waverly City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Bergen.
Here.
Drinkow.
Here.
Hengus.
Here.
McKenzie.
Here.
Raffi.
Here.
Chair.
Here.
I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say yes.
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 Our guest councilperson is...
I believe she was down at the state tennis meet. Her and her partner were able to go down there and they weren't sure if she was going to make it back in time, so hopefully, the reason, she's not here, was they've...
Very good, very good reasons, so...
Yeah, hopefully.
Okay, very good, thank you. It's now my pleasure to present a plaque of appreciation to a couple of the former Vern Gidley, if you would join me up here. Thank you. Vern retired from the Board of Adjustment after serving for...
A long time.
A long time. Sometimes it's better not to give numbers, but no, Vern, we appreciate your service greatly.
My pleasure.
And I know that you've got plenty of things to do without working on that, so...
Well, thank you, Dean.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next one I have is Mark Linius. Mark served for many years, apparently, on the Public Library Board, and again, it's my pleasure to give you this plaque of appreciation and for all your service and with your fireman and everything else, while it's a little hectic schedule.
A little bit.
Very good, thank you. Next item is, this is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on an ordinance amending Chapter 100, Section 100.4, .03, .4 of the city code governing residence allowances to be rebuilt in the R2 residential, R3 multifamily residential, and R4 multifamily residential transitional districts. Is there any written comments?
There are none, Your Honor.
I would open a public hearing if anyone has comments they would like to make to that effect or to this. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I move the third and final reading of Ordinance 1037 and an ordinance amending Chapter 100, Section 100.4, .03, .4 of the city code governing residence allowances to be rebuilt in the R2 residential, R3 multifamily residential, and R4 multiple-family residential transitional districts.
Second.
Second.
Counsel discussion.
I was wondering if we could just get a clarification on the setbacks. The setbacks will then be more restrictive or less restrictive?
This would not affect the setbacks, because this is just a provision that allows a nonconforming house to be rebuilt in those districts that are named.
But weren't the setbacks different in the old zoning versus the new zoning?
If it was nonconforming, it would probably have been setbacks that were in that district.
So, IED.
Hi.
So specifically, are you referring to like an R4 as an example?
Like if...
Where we used to allow single-family, now they're considered nonconforming because we changed the type of structure in R4? So are you asking, is the front setback different?
In a rebuild?
It can be, yes. In other words, if it's already nonconforming and it's destroyed, it's allowed to be rebuilt essentially where it was before.
That's my question.
Yes.
Okay.
Where it stands.
It'll remain nonconforming.
It'll remain nonconforming, yes.
Nonconforming, even in the rebuild?
That's correct.
Okay.
But presumably, it would have to hit the exact same footprint. You can't deviate in any way or you'd be subject to new zoning requirements.
Right, and I would argue you'd more likely have to go to the Board of Adjustments and ask for relief of the strict application of the law than in that case. That could be a relief valve, but yes, that would be a good example.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on an ordinance providing for rezoning of lots 56 through 67 in the Stonehaven 5th subdivision from R4 multifamily residential to R2 1-2 family residential district. Any written comments?
There were none, Your Honor.
I'd open a public hearing. Anyone have comments to that effect? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Entertain a motion, please.
I'll move the second reading of Ordinance 1038 and ordinance providing for rezoning of lots 56 through 67 in the Stonehaven 5 subdivision from R4 multifamily residential to R2 1-2 family residential district and waiving the third reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion, counsel questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Motion carried. This is going to seem quite repetitious, but we have a lot of them to go through, so bear with us. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on an ordinance providing for rezoning of lots 1 through 50 and Lot 53 in Stonehaven 4 subdivision from R3 multifamily residential to R1 single-family residential district. Any written comments?
There were none, Your Honor.
Entertain a, open it for public comment on this matter. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion, please.
Just a point of clarification, maybe Bill can help. We suspended the rules in the previous point. Do we have to reinstate the rules to then suspend the rules, or how do we...
Just suspend the rules to actually go to the third reading each time.
It's just, we're just suspending it for that third rule. I mean, we don't state that clearly. Okay.
I will move the second reading of Ordinance 1039 and ordinance providing for rezoning of lots 1 through 50 and Lot 53 in Stonehaven 4 subdivision from R3 multifamily residential to R1 single-family residential district. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Third and final reading of Ordinance 1038 and ordinance providing for rezoning of lots 56 through 67 in the Stonehaven 5 subdivision from R4 multifamily residential to R2 1-2 family residential district. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion. Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Approving to suspend the rules and move directly to the third and final reading. Entertain a motion.
I move to suspend the rules and move directly to the third and final reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion carried. Third and final reading of Ordinance 1039 and ordinance providing for rezoning of lots 1 through 50 and Lot 53 in Stonehaven 4 subdivision from R3 multifamily residential to R1 single-family residential district. Entertain a motion.
I will move, as read by the mayor, except with substitution to Stonehaven... Did you say Stonehaven 4?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was following along incorrectly. I will, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on an ordinance providing for rezoning of lots 12, 13, 14, and 15 in the Stonehaven 3rd subdivision from R4 multifamily residential to R1 single-family residential district.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Approving to suspend the rules and move directly to the third and final reading. Entertain...
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Third and final reading of Ordinance 1040 and ordinance providing for rezoning of lots 12, 13, 14, and 15 in the Stonehaven 3rd subdivision from R4 multifamily residential to R1 single-family residential. Entertain a motion and second.
With approval of Ordinance 1040's third reading as read by the mayor.
Second.
Counsel discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on an ordinance providing for the rezoning of Lot 51 in the Stonehaven 4 subdivision from R3 multifamily residential to R4 multifamily residential. Written comments?
No, sir, Your Honor.
Public hearing, anyone care to speak? Hearing none. Entertain a motion and second.
I will move the second reading of Ordinance 1041 and ordinance providing for the rezoning of Lot 51 in the Stonehaven 4 subdivision from R3 multifamily residential to R4 multifamily residential district.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Motion carried. Approving to suspend the rules and move directly to the third and final reading. Entertain a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion. All those in favor, say yes.
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 Third and final reading of Ordinance 1041 and ordinance providing for the rezoning of Lot 51 in the Stonehaven 4 subdivision from R3 multifamily residential to R4 multifamily residential district. Entertain a motion and second.
I will move the third and final reading of Ordinance 1041 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on an ordinance providing for the rezoning of specified lots in Rolling Meadows subdivision from R4 multifamily residential to R2 1-2 family residential district. Any written comments?
No, sir, Your Honor.
Open it up for comments from the audience. Hearing none. Close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I'll move the second reading of Ordinance 1042 and ordinance providing for the rezoning of specified lots in Rolling Meadows subdivision from R4 multifamily residential to R2 1-2 family residential district.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Hengus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on an ordinance providing for the rezoning of specified lots in Rolling Meadows subdivision from R4 multifamily residential to R2 1-2 family residential district. Entertain a motion and second.
I will move the third and final reading of Ordinance 1042 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion. Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on an ordinance providing for the rezoning of lots 1 through 27 in Omni Development 2nd Edition on First Street Southeast from R4 multifamily residential to R2 1-2 family residential district. Any written comments?
There were none, Your Honor.
Thank you. Open it up, open the public hearing.
Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion and a second. I will move the second reading of Ordinance 1043 and ordinance providing for the rezoning of lots 1 through 27 in Omni Development 2nd Edition on First Street Southeast from R4 multifamily residential to R2 1-2 family residential district.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Counsel discussion.
I hate to break the rhythm here, but this is the one where we had a split vote pretty much by planning and zoning, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so one of the comments in our staff's preparation for our review said that there were some requirements of R2 that they're not meeting. What are those?
The side yard setback has been changed to seven and a half feet instead of five feet. That's one of them. Is that the only one? I think that's it.
Okay, and do we know anything about what the rationale was? And I don't even answer if this happened when I wasn't here, because I don't want to waste other people's time, but was, do we know anything about the rationale of those planning and zoning members who opposed?
There were some different ideas about that, the fact that it did not completely comply with R2 now, and there was maybe some misconception of how that happened, because I think the developer took this property as an R4 property when he purchased it and did the subdivision pursuant to what the R4 would have been compliant at the time. So when we changed the R4, it made it noncompliant, so we were just trying to get it to the closest residential zoning that we had. And it allowed for, we had two zero lot line. We actually did make an exception to allow them to start that because we knew we were going to add zero lot lines in the new district. So there are two zero lot lines in that subdivision also. So it's generally compliant except for the side yard. The street isn't the same size as required now, but that wasn't part of requirements back when they were built. They didn't have that, the street with, in the zoning ordinance.
As I understand it, reading through the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission, that a couple of people voiced concerns about transitional development between the R4 district, that is to the west, and this R2. I have a sense of buildings are already there, I'm not sure that there is really that much of an issue with it, and certainly if, I would assume if the developer decided that they wanted to develop the entire area as an R2, than an R4, they could come to the city and ask for rezoning of that property, which is probably what would happen. I think the key to me in this is something that I think might have, in voting for all of these different rezoning things, and they do get somewhat repetitive, is that this is largely to make, you know, transfers, getting mortgages, those kinds of things. You have to do a title opinion much easier because now those properties are zoned as R4 and they're nonconforming, which raises red flags. If they're zoned as R2, you're not going to have those red flags and people are going in and having title searches and that kind of thing. So I think really that, to me, is more important in census property, there, I think there are only two lots that are not, two or three lots that aren't built on yet, they're pretty much built up. I think that it might be appropriate in this situation to overrule the PNZ, even though I know they put a lot of, you know, thought and effort into this, but this might be one of those situations where sometimes we can catch something that maybe kind of fell through the cracks.
Right, and I think it'd also be good to point out that PNZ, it failed, but it wasn't because of lack of support, it was a lack of numbers present to get to that support, so, without a full quorum.
Well, it had a full quorum, but it was just a bare quorum, it was three to two.
Well, yeah, but without the full committee is what I meant.
Right, right.
And so, they voted in favor, but they didn't have enough to...
No, actually, they voted...
So there are, as Rod said, a number of lots that haven't yet been built on. So new structures on those would have to conform to the new, like the R2. They wouldn't have that, as you say, the smaller side yard requirement. They'd have to conform to the, to R2. They wouldn't be grandfathered in.
Actually, they are grandfathered in because that's a requirement that was approved for the subdivision.
Okay, so they, even though they haven't been built on, they would, they could still be grandfathered in under the previous laws?
Yes.
Previous rules?
For that, for those, for those rules that were established with the subdivision.
In simple terms, this is to bring those existing vacant lots, unbuilt lots, into conformity with the new zoning codes.
Right. Otherwise, you have to, you have to show them that it was grandfathered in, even though it's nonconforming, and that requires showing that it's difficult for title opinions and those kinds of things, mortgage documents.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Sheriff, excuse me. Rothie?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Hengus?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Approving to suspend the rules and move directly to the third and final reading. Entertain a motion in a second.
I'll move down.
Second.
Any council discussion?
Yeah, I just want to ask, I feel we kind of, I mean, oh, I don't, I'm guessing, though, there's some other, some other, something that's, that is time dependent where we need to get this done, but since it was such a close vote of planning and zoning, I'm wondering if we should have a third reading.
That's certainly your, your choice if you vote, if the council would vote that.
So there's nothing related to construction or anything else that is, would necessitate an earlier decision?
It just, there's the same issues with financing, with refinancing, and then if a building permit has been submitted, we would still have to note that it's not properly zoned yet, although we would know to probably approve it, knowing that it's grandfathered in through the subdivision rules. It isn't critical that we do it, but we were just trying to do them all together, and that's the only reason we moved it this way, because there were some concerns in the other subdivisions about people wanting the speed to complete it.
Have we heard anything from any of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners?
Kathleen Payne came to our last meeting, but really couldn't give us a good explanation for why it got voted down. I mean, the explanation in the minutes is probably the most thorough, when you see the quotes from people.
All those in favor of suspending the rules, say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed?
No.
Motion carried, six one. Third and final reading of ordinance 1043, an ordinance providing for the rezoning of lots one through 27 in Omni Development, second edition, on First Street Southeast, from R4 Mall to Family Residential, to R2, one and two, Family Residential. Motion second, please.
I would move the third and final reading of ordinance 1043 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
I'll just say, I'm going to vote for this, but I just feel like we should have given them another, because I, I'm convinced, but wanted to give everyone opportunity to weigh in.
We did have a full discussion with the, with the chairman of the commission and some of the other members, and I think we felt that it was best just to come to the council with that decision rather than try to reconsider it and start a new, something that we didn't done before at the commission level, just to have a reconsideration.
Any other questions, concerns? Roll call vote, please.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Hengus?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on an ordinance amending section 104.4.01 fireworks of the Waverly Municipal Code. Any written comments?
No, sir.
Public hearing. I'll open it up for comments from anyone who wishes to speak to this. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion in a second.
I would move the second reading of ordinance 1044, an ordinance amending section 104.4.01 fireworks of the city municipal code, city of the Waverly Municipal Code.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any council discussion?
I have heard no public comments, no public outcry, no public consideration. I would have liked to have heard more feedback, but given the lack of response, I feel kind of they're letting us make the rules.
I got a couple of, a couple of people contacted me, but no more than that, who were in favor of an outright ban.
I heard from one or two people with that. A couple of people thought two weeks was a little long, but otherwise I didn't hear much feedback.
I guess for the public, the main thing here, we cleaned up the language to allow them and followed some of the state language, but the hours that they're going to be allowed are June 25th through July 8th, Sunday through Tuesday. They would be noon to 10:00 p.m. Friday and Saturdays during that time period would be noon to 11:00, and then on the Fourth of July, noon to 11:00. And it also allows for December 31st, from noon to 12:30 a.m., which would be January 1st.
Okay, thank you, Dan, for... Any other discussion?
I guess I would just like to say that I have some sympathy, quite a bit of sympathy, frankly, for people that have very legitimate reasons to be concerned about the noise and everything else with fireworks. I think if we voted this resolution down, that would simply mean that the current resolution would stay in effect, which is an even longer period, so we would make things worse by doing this, but I hope that, and I expect this resolution to pass, but I hope that the people in Waverly understand and are cognizant and accepting of some issues that people might have and be true neighbors in this situation, because if they are not, that would force us to revisit this next year and perhaps institute a ban.
I think that's one of the keys, is that we can, if we get public response after this year, we can revisit it again and clean it up.
Yeah, I would, I would second what Rod has to say about that. I think if people have concerns about it, and I know some people do, that once we go through this season, it would be appropriate, it would behoove them to speak up and say what they think. We can revisit this. My personal preference, now I'm a Grinch, would be not to have any fireworks in the city. I think Cedar Falls and Waterloo made a good choice, but I'm pretty sure I'm going to get voted down if I push for that, so I'm going to probably go with, this is a better one than some of the others that I had heard.
And I guess I'm on the opposite opinion, I think, don't think we have enough, and I've said it before, I don't think we have enough data from one year with very few complaints to make a change now, and now we're talking about already, well, we can change it again next year, and then we can redo it the next year after that, and then the next year after. Why don't we wait and get some data before we start to make decisions?
Depends on how you define data. I think we have had opinions from people that it's disturbing, and that they thought a month of fireworks was too long, and...
We didn't have very much from, it worked into the police, or it...
I don't think everybody calls the police. I'm not sure that everybody wants their neighbors to know they have...
Everybody calls to say they appreciate it or don't appreciate it either, so again, I don't think the data is there to say, you know...
I think those of us...
Because honestly, what I do see happening is that it will be back next year as a being.
Well, we don't know that, and I guess, I mean, my reason for supporting more, more limited time period is based on what I heard from citizens. I guess that's information. I mean, data sounds so empirical, but data is information.
Yeah, we'll see, and I think this is a good start. We can see how it goes.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Hengus?
No.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Motion carried, six one. Approving to suspend the rules and move directly to the third and final reading. Entertain a motion.
Since I tried to make this motion at the last meeting unsuccessfully, I'll make the motion this time. I moved that we suspend the rules and move directly to the third and final reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
And this is more to allow us to have it in place for this holiday season. Yes, sir, before the sales start, June 1st. Yes, sir.
That's only a week away.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, a little over.
Right in there.
We don't have another meeting before then.
Yeah, yeah.
Those in favor of suspending the rules and moving directly to the third and final reading, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
Motion carried, six one. Third and final reading of ordinance 1044, and an ordinance amending section 104.4.01 fireworks of the Waverly Municipal Code. Entertain a motion.
I will move the third and final reading of ordinance 1044 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Hengus?
No.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Approving to suspend the rules and move directly to the third and final reading. Entertain a motion.
Since I tried to make this motion at the last meeting unsuccessfully, I'll make the motion this time. I moved that we suspend the rules and move directly to the third and final reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
And this is more to allow us to have it in place for this holiday season. Yes, sir, before the sales start, June 1st. Yes, sir.
That's only a week away.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, a little over.
Right in there.
We don't have another meeting before then.
Yeah, yeah.
Those in favor of suspending the rules and moving directly to the third and final reading, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
Motion carried, six one. Third and final reading of ordinance 1044, and an ordinance amending section 104.4.01 fireworks of the Waverly Municipal Code. Entertain a motion.
I will move the third and final reading of ordinance 1044 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Hengus?
No.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. Approving to suspend the rules and move directly to the third and final reading. Entertain a motion.
Since I tried to make this motion at the last meeting unsuccessfully, I'll make the motion this time. I moved that we suspend the rules and move directly to the third and final reading.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
And this is more to allow us to have it in place for this holiday season. Yes, sir, before the sales start, June 1st. Yes, sir.
That's only a week away.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, a little over.
Right in there.
We don't have another meeting before then.
Yeah, yeah.
Those in favor of suspending the rules and moving directly to the third and final reading, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
Motion carried, six one. Third and final reading of ordinance 1044, and an ordinance amending section 104.4.01 fireworks of the Waverly Municipal Code. Entertain a motion.
I will move the third and final reading of ordinance 1044 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Bergen?
Yes.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Hengus?
No.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to one. This is the date, time, and place for a public hearing on the fiscal year 2018 budget amendment. Any written comments?
There were none, Your Honor.
Open the public hearing. Anyone that has words to say about commending the budget? Close the public hearing. Entertain a motion in a second.
And move approval of resolution 1871, approving the amending of the fiscal year 2018 budget.
Second.
Council discussion.
I have a question about just the, about the Cedar River Parkway contract services, which was quite a big number that I'm not remembering now.
About 1.4 million, roughly?
Yes, yeah, thank you. So could, could you just talk about that a little bit and help us understand, help me understand that?
I will explain it, and if I screw it up, Jennifer will correct me.
Okay.
So now what we have is when we get into some of the larger projects and we go to bond for them, we'll get the money in July while the project's already started. So we're having to move the expenditures, kind of like moving your credit card limit, into place to say that we have the authority to expend these in this year, and then the revenues will reimburse them. We have a reimbursement resolution on here that'll allow us to pay it back when the bond comes. So we technically can't really spend that until you authorize the expense of that after a certain point. So you're really using your reserves to offset that expenditure until the bond money arrives. It's not my preference to do that, but with the timing, the calendar, and the way it works, and getting the sale done, and our capacity issue to issue, this is the way we could get it started, try and get it done within a couple of construction seasons, and then be able to, you know, legally with the audit, to have enough funding to quote "cover" that in the meantime. And so what we're doing is allowing us to expend that funding, and then the bonds will reimburse that fund when they come in July.
So if we anticipate that already from the beginning, why can't that be built into the budget more accurately?
When we started to look at this project, we thought we'd be selling bonds in April, May of a year ago or so, and if you recall, we had some issue with disclosure and compliance, and we had some things from years ago that we had to get corrected. That took us into July, so we moved into the next fiscal year, so we did not have the capacity to be able to bond for this in May of this year, or we certainly would have. That was the initial plan. So now we'll kind of have that staggered problem, if you want to call it that, until we can get a space, or we can crack that budget terribly, and we'll try to do it as soon as we can, but that's kind of where we're leaning with our reserves, as long as we properly document it this way, and you're talking mainly three weeks of compliance into July before the funding comes, and so that, that's kind of what it was. We had every intent to do it that way, but when we had to get everything done for disclosure, once we crossed July 1st, it became capacity issue, and it just right down the line. So that was the ripple effect of not being able to issue in May of '17. Is that close?
Pretty darn close.
All right, well, we'll let it go, then. We'll let it go.
I have, I also have a question about the Airport Land acquisition. Is that also a matter of timing?
Well, Jennifer, handle that.
That was one where it was budgeted prior to this, and now we're just getting the, a lot of times, these projects, they cross over into different fiscal years, and that's a problem what happens with a lot of them, and that this is one of them.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just curious, I saw either police or fire where workers' comp was almost an 80% increase.
Yeah, that was the fire department.
Okay.
And it just happens, every year, they try and get, you know, as close as they can with it, and it just happened that we got hit hard.
Just in the fire department or total, and this is how you balance?
Mainly the fire department.
And that's just a happenstance of what happens to somebody, right?
Yes.
I mean, yeah.
So I wasn't aware of any large claims, so I was surprised.
Well, they have a new program where they are putting the different sect groups of people into their true groups, and I think the fire department is just catching up on, it's not really a claim, it's, it's getting the...
Classifications.
Yes, all together.
So I'm sorry, I didn't follow that.
Right now, IMWCA is who we have a workers' comp with, and they have a new program where they're trying to get as close as they can to classifications of different people, and they're getting it set up where we now can set it up in our payroll, the classifications, what they think should be where, and it came out that the fire department just...
And that affects cost?
Yes, mhm.
Reallocation of costs, based on their categories that we didn't have synced with them, and as they change your program, we have to reallocate according to what they say, and sometimes you get that ebb and flow, so we most likely had a budget that is not in that category, and so we're, again, it's kind of cleaning up the books, and, you know, every municipality usually does a budget amendment in May, and the reason, some of the new members, you can't really do one in June. If it's challenged legally, then it's void. So May is really the last you can do a budget amendment, and so we aim for the latest possible meeting in May, and you go to try and figure out the things that we had during the year, like the pool pump that broke, and we had to replace it in emergency. That's in here allocated. The construction projects that go past June 30th, we don't stop them on July 1st, they do keep going. We have to count for that, and then the proceeds offset it, and so a lot of what you see year to year are going to be those type of incidents where it was funding that we had, it came after the first of the year, after the fiscal year, then we have to reallocate it, or it was a year late in getting done, but the revenue was there, so we have to move it forward into the next fiscal year. And so you'll see line after line of these small things in the last year that came up, or we identified that we're going to be lacking, and we could certainly not do this, then the audit would have a number of things where we missed this, whatever spent here, and we'd be written up for that. So it's an attempt to kind of clean up any, you know, incidentals that we had throughout the year, or to accommodate your larger size dollar amounts, such as the bonds that we talked about, which we will have reimbursement for later on. So every May, you will see something like this. Some cities do two or three a year. We just tend to do the one in May.
Is this larger than usual, though?
Maybe by dollar amount a little bit, but not by quantity.
Maybe for capital projects, but for the rest of the budget, it's pretty small.
Yeah, yeah.
So would that be, I'm looking at the sidewalk projects where there's a $92,000 increase, is that because we put off our sidewalk projects for this summer, so that, like, I know we were going to wait until we had our visioning, our future planning in September?
Let me take a quick look.
Where is that?
Total general government, like a fourth down the sidewalk projects, it's gone from $65,000 up $92,000 to $157,000.
I think that was actual cost of what it took to actually do the projects, once we got the assessments in and everything that we had, it came in higher than we anticipated, which is another reason we have amendments to cover those, so that we don't run afoul of the state audits. So, yeah, that would have been an actual amount came in, beyond what we thought it would be. And sometimes we do that, we're estimating a certain amount of lineage or a certain amount of cost per unit, and then when it comes in the end, for various factors, sometimes we're off.
So is that reference to this past year's budget or next year's budget?
This is the budget we're currently in, past year's budget.
Okay.
So we're fixing everything before June 30th, then we close the books, and they will audit then everything that we've done so far.
Okay, any other discussion, concerns? Roll call vote, please.
Drinkow?
Yes.
Hengus?
Yes.
McKenzie?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Sheriff?
Yes.
Waldstein?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Time for public comment for any item that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that has concern they would like to speak at? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any...
We need to go through what we're paying for.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
We do? Sorry about that.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm still back two items, I think. The consent calendar consists of a pay request from Kramer &amp; Associates for the Cedar River Parkway East improvements 2018 for $180,435.64. Pay request from Modern Builders Incorporated for the Waverly Municipal Airport bulk hangar improvements 2017 for $10,022.50. Pay request from McClure Engineering Company for the Waverly Airport runway 29 extension 2018 for $3,889.50. Pay request from Stanley Consultants for the Cedar River Parkway East improvements A class B beer license for Pizza Hut, number 4348. Class C liquor license for GT Miller Time. Class C liquor license for Waverly Bowl Inn, and the cash dispersments for April of 2018.
And I'm still going to move the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions, concerns?
Just clarification, class B applies to beer, class C applies to liquor, is that the way we do that? Is that the difference between class B and class C?
There's also native wine, there's, there's several different classifications, so...
The final section of the financial statements is Aid Bailey's response to the government auditing standards. We did have two minor, sorry, Iowa State compliance issues in 2017. One was related to the prior board chair being a related party, and one was due to the August Board minutes not being published in the local newspaper. However, they were published on our website. Both of these issues have since been addressed. According to Iowa Code 388.10, a municipal telecommunications utility must have separate books from the electric utility. We do keep separate books for the telecom and electric utilities, which you will see throughout our financial statements. Our auditors found no issues with the allocation of expenses between the telecom and electric utility. For the Waverly Communications Utility, we aren't able to share a lot of information due to the confidentiality under Iowa Code Chapter 22.7, Paragraph 6. This paragraph allows us not to share this information with our competitors. As agents of the city, I encourage any of you to visit Waverly Utilities and discuss this with Darrell and I. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Anyone from the council have questions for Casey? I do have one, as I went through that. Noticed that the streetlight usage should be down from, because of conversion to LED lighting, and yet the expenses were up. Have any...
I'd have to look into it. It could be because I think we repaired and repainted a lot of those streetlights.
Kurt Atkins, Waverly Utilities. The LED streetlights that you're talking in reference to were replaced in the 2010 timeframe. More likely, we probably saw that increase in the Bremer Avenue project. We did a lot of repairs of the antique streetlights and updating at that time, so there's probably a little bit of increase there.
All right. Very good. Thank you. Seeing none, hearing no questions, other questions or concerns? Thank you, Casey, very much for your contribution and the audit. Looks favorable. We'll continue to rely on our local utilities for all the service that you provide, so... Approving Resolution 1878, a resolution approving the preliminary replat for Lot 15 Rolling Hills, second edition. Entertain a motion and a second.
Move approving Resolution 1878, a resolution approving the preliminary replat for Lot 15 Rolling Hills, second edition.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Approving Resolution 1875, a resolution declaring an official intent under Treasury Regulation 1.150-2 to issue debt to reimburse the city for certain original expenditures paid in connection with specified projects. Entertain a motion and a second.
I'll move Resolution 18-75, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
This is the reimbursement resolution we were talking about. So this will allow us to refund what we've already expensed when the bonds come through in July.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Next item is approving Resolution 1876, a resolution approving the granting of an additional easement to Mid-American Energy on city-owned property for a new gas regulator station.
I will move approval of Resolution 1876, a resolution approving the granting of an easement to Mid-American Energy on city-owned property for a new gas regulator station for the sum of $1.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
When we... Excuse me.
Oh, no, you go ahead, Mike.
When we ran an easement, is that open-ended? Is this last forever? Is it for a period of time? Or is it until we get tired of them having the easement? Just curious.
It should be a perfect, a permanent easement. They're going to build a utility structure there for the connection, so... And we are doing an additional one because they found some problems with the location of the other one, so we just added some more space to this one.
So you're saying it would be a permanent easement? Okay, thanks.
This is an area that's directly east of Quikstar East.
Correct.
But we did approve something in that vicinity before, right?
Yeah, right next to it.
Well, okay.
This is the second one. They found that they couldn't do all they needed to do on the first one, so they asked for an additional space.
Can you clarify what the problems were with the previous location?
They talked about either something structurally or something in the ground, or whether it was proximity to the, I don't know what exactly it was, just logistic issues with keeping within the other easement.
So now it's both of them?
Right. Now it's both of them.
Exactly what functions as a gas regulator station?
It steps down the gas pressure.
So this would be where they would be adding deodorant that they do, like out at Keanu Mutual?
No. They have a high-pressure gas main that comes into it, and they have to decrease the pressure in order to distribute it to homes and businesses.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Rothie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Approving Resolution 1878, or 77, I'm sorry, 1877, a resolution approving the license for multi-use pathway sidewalk with Cedar River Railroad Company of Homewood, Illinois. Entertain a motion and a second.
I move approval of Resolution 1877, a resolution approving the license for multi-use pathway sidewalk with the Cedar River Railroad Company of Homewood, Illinois, for the payment of a $1,000 licensing fee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
Could I get some more information about what's going on here?
This is Bremer Avenue. This is the bike trail across Bremer Avenue at 12th, on the north side of Bremer Avenue, to go across the tracks. You have to have permission to go across the tracks, and you have to have an agreement with them. Basically says that we will keep, we will maintain it, we will make sure that people don't misuse it, we will be responsible for liability for it, all those things that we do because we're crossing the right-of-way in the tracks.
And why do we pay $1,000 to maintain it? Or to get a...
Every time you do something with the railroad, you have to pay them something to consider your application. And we had to scramble to get this done so that we could not delay them working on the trail. And we did get that done, so we can get that done.
And now is this...
Big one-time toll.
Is this a sidewalk or a bike trail?
This is a 10-foot bike trail.
Okay.
It's just a sidewalk on the north side.
It's north side of Bremer Avenue. We're basically making the sidewalk wider, so...
It's 10-foot all the way out.
It's a new one on the north side.
Yeah, a new one on the north side.
This would apply whether it's four-foot or 10-foot. And in two weeks, we'll do one just like this for 20th Street Northwest.
Yeah, we already have that one worked out.
Do we have to pay $1,000 for that one, too?
Yep, yes.
Why don't we have a better passenger rail system?
I will tell you this, that...
Don't make it $2,000.
They have a new representative, and he was very good to work with and very prompt to get back and forth, so it didn't take as long as it normally does, either.
And there's not a sidewalk that goes across on 5th Avenue, is there? By the baseball field?
No.
No, but we're not affecting the crossing. Makes sense. We're not rebuilding the tracks. We're not doing...
I mean, we are later, though. With the 20th Street.
20th Street will be a total rebuild on the roadway crossing.
And that's a 10-foot bike trail also there.
Oh, okay. I thought we were just...
Mike, on 5th Avenue, then, we're just building up the approaches? We're not actually, there's nothing's actually going to be done at the railroad tracks?
Correct.
Now, what about the sidewalk on the south side of Bremer Avenue? Isn't there?
We already paid our $1,000.
Oh, years ago, we paid that off.
Oh, is this like a one-time fee that, you know, and forever we can maintain this sidewalk so long as we've paid it once?
This is the transactional payment to have them consider everything. They get paid for their time in considering an application.
Interesting.
We're glad to be able to maintain it.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Chair.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Item number six, approving second reading of Ordinance 1045, an ordinance amending Chapter 7 by adding Section 7.8, elected officials' removal procedures to the Waverly Municipal Code. Entertain a motion and a second.
I will move Ordinance 1045, as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
I'd like to thank all the work that went into preparing the ordinance. Looks good.
Appreciate input from the people that did help us do that, too, from the council.
Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Item number seven, approving first reading of Ordinance 1046, an ordinance amending Section 100.4, providing for addition of Section 100.4.14, conversion to condominium or multifamily housing cooperative and setting a public hearing. Entertain a motion and a second.
I'll move approval of first reading of Ordinance 1046, an ordinance amending Section 100.4, providing for addition of Section 100.4.14, conversion to condominium or multiple family housing cooperative, and setting June 4, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers of City Hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
I understand this, this is basically saying if somebody converts, that it basically opens it up to the permitting process and that type of thing.
So what happens is apartment buildings and condominiums and housing cooperatives have different building code requirements. And so they've kind of have a glitch in the state law that allowed two different things happening, so they're defining these properties that want to convert to a cooperative as residential without requiring any of the building code requirements. So we have to kind of fix that problem so that they have to certify that it has been upgraded for that purpose. And there may be good reasons to do a condominium type, and there may be only certain things that need to be corrected, because they may have done some of them, but not all of them. It may have put fire doors in or something of that nature. And we don't want to stop them from doing that, but we feel like we need to make sure we have an ordinance that makes them, upgrade them when they're getting that status.
Do we have any housing co-op here in Waverly?
We do now, because we had the Rolling Meadow Unit 54, is it 54 units over there? The two buildings were sold and converted to a cooperative. And they are not compliant with the building code that would be required for those if they were built from the beginning.
Would this, would they be required to go back now, or had they been grandfathered in since?
No, they're, once they're approved, and once they've elected to do that, then they're able to do that. You know, it was, it also allowed them to avoid the Section 42 requirement that they be a commercial assessed structure, and they will now be assessed as a residential with a different rollback, with a substantially less rollback. Because they don't, the definition of what kind of property it is, isn't controlled by the, it's controlled by the definition that the assessor puts on it. And the assessor has no choice and can't rely upon the Section 42 requirement that was done back in 1999. So it's one of those kind of things that I think may get fixed at some point. But locally, we can fix it by basically say, we don't want a cooperative or condominium that doesn't qualify as one under the building code.
So was this in reaction to that occurring?
It was my first recognition of what the problem was, and then I talked with the city attorney, one of the city attorneys from Des Moines, who has been experiencing this for the last several years, actually experienced it several years ago, changed their ordinance, and then had stopped that because it was a real rush of people that did this with just normal apartment buildings in order to take advantage of the assessment classification. So I borrowed heavily, in fact, probably took it almost verbatim from theirs, because he had suggested, and other cities have done this, too. If you don't have a lot of apartment buildings in your community, you don't have this problem. But the bigger cities have been dealing with this for some time.
And where is this one? Where's the one you mentioned?
Rolling Meadow, down south of the high school, the two-building complex. The one that was built in 99.
Oh, the old, the old unit.
Yeah, not the new ones.
This is probably a question that's too mean to ask, but are there any other things that you know of or aware of that Des Moines has had to deal with that we should update our code appropriately before it happens here?
I try to listen when I'm at the lawyers, municipal lawyers, conferences and those kinds of things. You try to follow what's happening on the listserv, and you just try to do the best you can.
So you're saying it's a good thing that we let you go to these conferences?
Any other council questions, discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Rothie.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Watzstein.
Yes.
Motion carried, seven zero. Next item is approving the quote for purchase and installation of three RRFB Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon pedestrian crossing signals on Bremer Avenue from KW Electric Incorporated of Cedar Falls. Entertain a motion and a second.
I'll move approval of the quote for purchase and installation of three Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon pedestrian crossing signals on Bremer Avenue from KW Electric Incorporated of Cedar Falls, Iowa for $28,500.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Council discussion.
Can we get a little background on the history of this? Because I really haven't heard about these before.
Okay. There's been a lot of discussion about having enhanced pedestrian crossing warning signs, signals along the Bremer Avenue corridor. We've talked about the Waverly Rail Trail Crossing up there by...
That's on a 4th Street.
4th Street East. Duo's in Warburg. That's on 8th Street. And then along the Dry Run Creek, along the west side of that at 6th Street. So this would be the east side of 6th Street is where the other crossing would be. So along the Bremer Avenue corridor, we have signalized crossings. But then we have, in a few locations, a significant gap between your traditional traffic signals. And in order to be able to provide some enhanced pedestrian crossing locations, the discussion had been to do them at the Waverly Rail Trail and then 6th Street and 8th Street on the west side. So this was incorporated into the Bremer Avenue design. They, as part of the project, they incorporated the bases and the conduit work into the project. So this goes back, you know, several years ago when the design work was being performed. And then it was left up to the city then to acquire the hardware. And so we have three sets of these rectangular rapid flashing beacons that will be installed with the appropriate signage.
And it looks like the budgeting has already been, that's as well... that's as water tiff, general obligation bonds, that's already been included in our budget?
It's part of the overall... Yep. Part of the overall project cost. You know, we, we've got somewhere around, you know, $5 million in, in local costs. And so this was anticipated to be part of that. We have two sets of these crossings down by the soccer complex on the Cedar River Parkway. And so we're wanting to stay with the same equipment for being able to maintain, readily maintain that equipment.
So Mike, in our material, we have this photo, it looks like Fourth Street.
Yep.
With an enhanced crossing. How is that electrified? Do the signs flash when somebody's ready to go across?
Yeah, it's pedestrian activated, so there's a push button and, yeah, it's, it's very bright and intense and...
The outside of the diamond lights up.
Yeah, it's like a strobe light going off.
So this is an epileptic, she closes eyes then at that point, probably.
Anaphylactic driving.
There are LED lights. In addition to this, we would still look at utilizing the, the yield to pedestrian sign, signage that we have on the, in the center lane of the road. So, you know, we're trying to do as much as we can to alert the motorists that there's pedestrians wanting to cross the street and you're supposed to yield.
Just clarification on the Fourth Street East Bremer that will go across the intersection, not at the diagonal.
The official crossing is, is on the east side of Fourth Street. Yep, so the trail does not cut diagonally across Bremer Avenue. It actually routes you, so it's a perpendicular crossing on the east side.
The limitation of the state that they won't let us do a diagonal?
It, it would not be appropriate to have a diagonal pedestrian crossing. In addition to these, like you see with the, the photo here, we also do the heavy pavement markings. So we do alt barcode going across because these are not signalized intersections in the traditional sense. These are enhanced pedestrian crossings. So we're going to do it with pavement markings as well as signage and, and flashing lights.
And Mike, does that, do the pavement markings have some sort of reflective paint? I ask that because I...
Yep, all of our...
Hate to admit this on camera, but when it's dusk, it's very difficult to see people like crossing the street by the Virginia Apartments.
All pavement markings, whether it's the yellow center line markings or white edge line markings, symbols, or they have, when the paint is still wet, they have glass beads that are sprinkled on top, and that's what gives you your reflectivity.
And this is just the cost for the poles and the signs, the, the wiring and all that has already been kind of installed and paid for?
Correct.
Okay.
Have we had any conversations with Warburg at all about putting something like this on Fifth Avenue between the dorms?
Because I remember their, their student body president came and talked to us about that.
I wonder if that wouldn't be a good thing to talk to the college about partnering with them or something? Because that's a dark crossing there with a lot of shrubbery. It's not for tonight, but in the future.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Just like to add that I, sign of how long I've been on council, that I was on council when we removed the light at Sixth Street and the crossing there. And I'm glad that we're doing something to put something back there.
I will second that opinion.
Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried, seven, zero. Approving the GP licenses and annual support to access utility accounts from Waverly Utilities of Waverly, Iowa. Entertain a motion and a second, please.
I will move to approve the GP licenses and annual support to access the utility accounts from Waverly Utilities of Waverly, Iowa for $9,750.
Second.
Motion made, second. Council discussion.
I have a very basic question. What is, what is a GP license? Does it have something to do with computer access or?
When we move the billing over to Waverly Utilities, this will allow us to have access to that system. So they're the user licenses to allow some individuals to have full access and partial access. I'm not sure what the GP stands for, but Jennifer may...
I tried to Google it, I couldn't find it.
Yeah, it's Georgia Pacific. I mean, it all comes up right on. That's what it is, is it's allowing us to get the licensing back. So we have access kind of the flip of what they would have had had we kept it. So these are some of the hard costs that we'll have upfront as we transition into that July 2.
And why do we want all these people to have access? We're not doing it anymore?
Well, a lot of them will need access to the system where there comes to looking for water meters or readings. We need the system in our own books, so to speak, so that we can account for it budgetarily. And if we have questions, concerns, this gives us that access to be able to do that. It is very limited, it's only a couple of people that have that full access, and then some just have a read-only, such as the Public Works and the Water Department. So a lot of it is deal with water meters.
Is this an annual license?
I believe one of them is. I'm trying to think if they all are.
They all are.
They all are?
Is it all of them? Yeah, there's annual support to it. And the license itself, I believe, is also each year.
Seems kind of unfortunate that we have to pay almost $10,000 to access our own information, but I know sometimes that's the way that these systems go. There is really no alternative to doing this. It just, it, it, not something that I really like to see.
Seems to be the trend in software. That's a more popular thing is buying licenses versus the actual software. And had we went and done the upgrade ourselves, we would have been charging Waverly Utilities for that software license to access their electrical data. So it's kind of a cross of, do we want to hold it or pay the fees? And chose to move the billing, pay the fees.
Right.
Okay, any other?
Reminds me of the railroad a little bit.
Okay, any other comments, discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried, seven, zero. Reports from boards and commissions. Monthly financials. It was a long, long list. Received into record. Library board minutes. Looked good, received into record. Plan zoning commission minutes from April 5th and April 19th. Received into record. Golf commission minutes from May 8th. Received into record. Staff comments.
Yeah, that's something for us, sir.
Weather permitting, the pool opened this Saturday for the season for the 51st time. And we, that's where I was tonight. We start at 5:00 and we got done a little while ago in terms of training some staff. But it's looking pretty good. Things seem to be working. We, we're going to have several groups in the next week from the school utilize the pool during the off-hours before we open and, and we're going to have another good season. The other thing I wanted to just inform you was that we had a, a family that mowed the side of the Dry Run over the weekend. And I gave them a call and I said, you know, we don't want to do that. And they apologized and they thought they were trying to beautify the city type thing. So just a reminder, everybody that lives along the Dry Run, don't mow the, the long grasses on the, the angled bank. You can mow everything up on top, but don't go down inside. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Tab. Any other staff comments?
I think it's all we have, sir.
Okay. City council comments.
I know that this weekend, Warburg College and our local high school are both celebrating graduation ceremonies. So I'd like to congratulate all of those high school graduates and college graduates. I have a high school graduate in my family and I'm very proud of her. So congratulations to all the graduates this year.
Very good.
I have just two quick comments here, Your Honor. First of all, I would just like to say how glad I am that we finally have some pedestrian assist lights on Bremer Avenue. That has been a real contentious issue for me, going all the way back to where the crossing light on, on Sixth Street was taken out. And I think that this will be very helpful. So I'm, I'm very happy to see that finally coming to fruition. Secondly, and on a related point, as I was walking in the community today and walking here tonight, I'm sure that very high on the priority list for the Public Works or whatever group is in charge of this is repainting the crossing walks because the, the paint on the crosswalks is almost completely gone in a lot of situations. And certainly that makes it much safer when you have a crosswalk that's adequately eliminated because the traffic can see it. And secondly, I think it just makes for a, the city to look well for people who are visiting when we have our, our crosswalks, our pedestrian walks adequately marked. So I would hope that that's a high priority for the city works department.
Tim?
I'm good.
Edie?
I just want to continue to encourage people to visit our downtown businesses. I think they're really making an extra effort to be cooperative in this construction project, which is huge and has to be affecting businesses, I'm guessing. So I know I try to shop downtown even more than I used to. So just would encourage everybody to do that.
Dan?
Nothing for me.
Dan?
I had one thing on my list, but I think it was noted this morning at your K-way interview, but just tree growth around Long First Avenue southeast. Some of the stop signs are getting pretty tough to see on the detour. But I think that was pointed out there, so I'm sure it's being addressed. That and just a huge thank you, I guess, to the folks that have been sending in comments on Champions Ridge. There's been so many that I haven't been able to respond individually, so I thought I would do a collective thank you. And I would also encourage them to send the same message to their financial institutions to make sure that they know that as customers, they're interested in seeing the project move forward.
Good, thank you. Mike?
Just ask Mike, do we have an update on progress on the railroad work at Bremer and West 12th, I guess? Is it on, on schedule? When do we think it'll be finished? Who knows?
On the west side of the railroad tracks?
How far along?
We don't know yet. They may have the concrete in, but they may not have it cured by the weekend. It's just a race to get it done. And hopefully the weather holds for them to do it. It's the best we can do at this point.
And do we know when the work begins on Bremer Avenue that will take us past work pre-college and make it inaccessible for a while? Is that in the fore?
I think in that respect, the, the next stage that they're going to work on is from the railroad tracks, from Pizza Hut to Casey's. They're going to do that, I think it's about 300-foot stretch. They're going to get the railroad tracks, get that worked on, get opened back up, and then they're immediately, it sounds like, going to start and, and go west. And once that is done, then they'll come back and do from the Dirty Dog down to, is it Family Video?
Just in time for homecoming.
Probably. Yeah.
Okay.
Be about right.
I know.
We're hopeful they'll have it done a little sooner. They've made great strides in moving the east side along, and so I'm hoping they'll have it done.
I think that's kind of the view of all, all the staff is that the work seems to be moving along quicker than it did a year ago. And I think that they have maybe a, just a good system in place now. So I, I think in that respect, we're, we're hopeful.
We're getting the water lines in easier than we did last year, so they're getting, they have a lot of those done downtown.
Okay, any other council comments? Have a couple. Phil, did we get settled with Artesian Dirt Works on the, for the Cedar East Parkway?
Yes, the, we went through the condemnation hearing and the, we will have a, a resolution to approve on the 4th, which will approve the, what the jury or the commission came back at and some of the additional costs. And we'll probably close it on the 5th pending approval of this group. But we're using the number that was established by the commission, which was kind of in between both parties' positions. So it ended up being fair, I think, a fair to, to both parties.
And are, we still have one property at, at the airport for the safety zone? Is that correct that we're trying to work on?
Yes. We're working on, on appraisal. That, that will happen this year, and then we'll come back to the council with evaluation.
Okay, very good. I'd like to congratulate Chief Purcell. I found out just shortly before the council meeting that he celebrated 20 years on...
So did Mike.
Oh, and Mike did too?
I'm up to 21.
You're up to 21. Congratulations to both of you for...
There is a 21.
Oh, my goodness.
Gracious.
Last Sunday, it was 33.
Wow.
Well, it looks like a lot of congratulations are in there.
Yes. I either need to spend more time or better communication. But no, congratulations.
Nice and cheap, that's all.
To each one of you for your service to the, for the, to the community and...
We had one employee that went 45 years.
That's correct.
Well, you're almost halfway there.
I do want to, Dan, Dan touched on it a little bit, but I do want to mention, which I did on K-way this morning. I know that I and all of the council members were on a, on a hit list the end of last week. Emails coming, messages coming to support Champions Ridge. The last count I had was a pretty good estimate of 100, and they were still coming in. And some of you have mentioned that you're trying to reply to them individually. I did one, I happened to run into Edie and Ann at breakfast Saturday morning, and, and my reply was, we support Champions Ridge and you people, we thank you for your support. But in order for this to happen, the fundraising has to be there. And without it, so if you, if you really want to support it, open your checkbooks and your wallets and help the group meet their, their first benchmark of $500,000 September 21st. And if that happens, then the next one is November 20th, or, yeah, November 21st of $750,000. And with the ultimate goal of, of at least a million by the end of the year. So appreciate all the comments. Yes, the city does support it. We already have a lot of invested in there. But without your support financially, as citizens of Waverly and surrounding communities, because there were some from outside of Waverly, it's not going to happen. And I think there's some confusion about who's trying to do what and, but no, citizens, you will have to do that now.
And I think it's worth mentioning the figures too, just to put it into perspective. I mean, the city has already invested about 1.2 million... I mean, the city has already invested about $1.2 million, I think. $1.5 million in, in land purchase. The county is what, about $400,000? $300,000?
$20,000.
$20,000, okay. And the project estimate is $8 million. So I mean, it's, I think it's just important to keep, to keep all that in mind, to encourage folks to support it financially.
Very good. One last question, I don't think anyone has the results of Matty Poppy yet, but I think that's why the news person left early, because he's, but anyway, it's possible, anyway. Next item is to enter into an executive session to discuss collective bargaining strategy, strategy for upcoming city unit negotiations as provided by section 20.17.3 of the Iowa Code. Entertain a motion to enter into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Drinkow.
Yes.
Hengus.
Yes.
Mackenzie.
Yes.
Raffi.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Lotstein.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Motion.
Just a note, we'll be coming back into open session.
We will be coming back into open session, but, so...